We'll call the meeting to order. Good afternoon. Welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's June 4, 2015, meeting. Thank you for all in attendance. We'll note that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the ncpc.gov website. We do have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order and, without objection, we'll proceed with the agenda that's been publicly advertised. I will note that there is a revision to the agenda. The agenda item on, let's see, the Intelligence Community Campus Project has been withdrawn by the applicant. We frankly got what is almost truly a last-minute bit of information that we did not have, that neither the applicant nor our staff had sufficient time to dissect and then properly put it before you. So that will likely be before us again at our July meeting. I will note that the July meeting is shaping up to be a weighty one, and so we will be in touch. We may have to start a little bit early, maybe an hour, maybe more, but we will be in touch with that, and Mr. Acosta may have more to say on that. Agenda item number one is a report of the chairman, and I don't have a report, so we'll go to agenda item number two. Report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Yes, you do have a written statement in front of you, but as the chairman mentioned, we may have a lengthy meeting on July 9, which I wanted to make sure you have. Some people thought our meeting was actually on July 2, but the commission meeting will be held on July 9, which is a Thursday. We expect the Eisenhower Memorial, the Kennedy Center expansion, the Vietnam Memorial Visitor Center, and the ICCB project, among other projects, to be on that agenda. So we'll be in touch with you, as the chairman noted, if we needed to reschedule our time. We'd also like to welcome a new intern to NCPC, Lee Votchubek. She is a third-year student at the University of Virginia, where she's majoring in urban and environmental planning, and she's now working with our Office of Public Engagement. And finally, I'd like to know, we have new lobby displays, which tell the history of the commission. Our Office of Public Engagement and our graphic designer, Paul Juden, did a wonderful job with the new lobby display, and I all encourage you to go out and look at it after the meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Acosta? Hearing none. Agenda item number three is the legislative update, and general counsel, Ms. Schuyler.
Mr. Chairman, I actually have one item on which I'd like to report. It is Bill HR 2322, which is known as the Public Buildings Reform and Savings Act. And the general thrust of this act, this bill, is to include a number of measures designed to reduce costs of federal real estate and improve building security. Section 3 of the bill is of particular interest to this commission because it addresses the replacement of the Department of Energy headquarters, also known as the Forestal Complex on Independence Avenue. This portion of the bill requires the administrator of GSA to sell, exchange, or using some combination thereof, a portion of the Forestal Complex necessary to generate the funds to construct a new Department of Energy headquarters on government-owned land. The bill also requires that all aspects of the new DOE headquarters to be consistent with the Southwest Eco District Plan prepared by the NCP and accepted by the commission. The bill was introduced and referred to the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure on May 14, 2015. The committee has already held a consideration and markup session on May 20, and they've ordered the bill to be reported with amendments by voice vote. I've not been able to ascertain the amendments as of this point in time.
Do you know who the sponsor of that legislation is?
Someone from Indiana. I know who it is, but I don't have it. I can get that information to you.
Any questions for Ms. Schuyler? Agenda item number four is the consent calendar. We have two items. Agenda item number 4A is the final site and building plans for the Fuller Road Access Control Point, Control Facility and Realignment at Marine Corps Base Quantico. And agenda item 4B is a text and map amendment establishing zoning for a portion of the former Walter Reed Campus in northwest Washington. Any questions? If not, is there a motion on the consent agenda? Mr. Dixon, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved.
So move.
Consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent agenda items say aye. Opposed, no. Agenda item 5A, right, is that where we are? Agenda item 5A is preliminary site and development plans for the I-295 and Malcolm X Avenue Interchange Improvements. This is Shepherd Parkway and St. Elizabeth's West Campus. We have Mr. Hart. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The General Services Administration has submitted preliminary site development plans for the I-295 Malcolm X Interchange Improvement Project. This project is being proposed, at this point, to provide improved access to the St. Elizabeth's West Campus. This is the site, which is just south, excuse me, try to get a pointer, which is just south of the St. Elizabeth's West Campus. It parallels I-295. To the west is South Capitol Street, as well as the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, and I noted, St. Elizabeth's West Campus is to the north of it. It will be constructed on a site that was formerly part of the Shepherd Parkway, as well as District Department of Transportation land. This site is adjacent to Shepherd Parkway, which is a 198-acre forested park. This park slopes down from east to west as it reaches, until it reaches I-295. Shepherd Parkway is part of the Fort Circle Parks and was originally intended as a roadway that connected the Civil War defensive forts that ring Washington, D.C. That roadway never occurred, and this is the park that we have today. To provide greater clarity around the project area and the land ownership, here is a map that GSA provided that indicates the areas that will be needed for the project. These areas include DC right-of-way areas in yellow. In red is land that needed to be transferred from the National Park Service. And then there was an easement area of about 1.2 acres that was just to the east of that. And just for your orientation, the left-hand portion of this slide is north. So east is to the top, south is to the right, and to the bottom is west. I'll also note at this point that the area in red has actually already been transferred. You all approved that transfer at the May meeting, or this past meeting. So here are some views looking at the existing condition, and these are both views looking northbound on I-295. To the right on both images are the area in question that will become part of this access road. The project's part of one of the phases of the St. Elizabeth's West Campus Master Plan. The 2012 master plan includes 14,000 employees and approximately 3,600 parking spaces, with development primarily occurring on the west campus. There is some limited east campus development as well. This image is from 2012 Campus Master Plan Amendment, and it describes the development phasing on the installation. The access road, which is here, is, has always been scheduled in Phase 2, along with the center building, which is where the Department of Homeland Security Headquarters will be located once this building is complete, as well as FEMA. These were all included in the second phase of the master plan. GSA has met with staff recently and let us know that they are planning on doing some changes to the master plan, and this will be, this update will be coming to the commission in the near future. So before I discuss the project, I wanted to provide you with a little bit of background on the timeline. I'm not going to read all of this. The timeline summarizes the St. Elizabeth's West Campus master planning process to date. The commission approved the first master plan in January of 2009, and at that time, that included a roadway connection from I-295 through Shepherd Parkway and into the St. Elizabeth's Campus. That 2009 approval included, among other things, a requirement for GSA to provide further roadway improvement analysis to minimize the impacts of the roadway. GSA has provided additional analysis in subsequent years through the Section 4F, Section 106, and the National Environmental Policy Act reviews, and the commission approved the master plan amendment in June of 2012, which included a conceptual design of a roadway through Shepherd Parkway. So the commission has been a strong proponent of protecting open space, as it is a limited resource in this region. Using open space for transportation purposes is something that we grappled with with this project. And this is really a balance, providing the improved access to this new campus with the protection of open space. As part of the process, the Federal Highway Administration conducted a review of the process through Section 4F of the District, of the, excuse me, of the Department of Transportation Act of 1966. According to the DOT website, Section 4F review is required when publicly owned land or historic properties are proposed for use for roadway purposes, as is the case here. Through the Section 4F process, FHWA worked with the National Park Service, GSA, NCPC, and others to first determine that there weren't any alternatives to using the parkland for the road, and then seek ways to minimize the amount of land necessary and impacts. The FHWA completed its Section 4F review in May of 2012 and determined that there were no feasible and prudent alternatives to the use of Shepherd Parkway for the roadway, or at least a portion of it. Here we have the roadway design that was from, as was depicted in the 2008 master plan. This was one of five options being explored in the plan. All the options included the use of retaining walls because of the topography in the site. As I noted, the topography goes down towards I-295, which is here. Retaining walls in this alternative ranged up to 39 feet in height, and this option included the use of approximately 10.4 acres of Shepherd Parkway. By May of 2012, the roadway had changed and is very similar to what we have here. This is the 2008 version, and then this is the current version we're looking at. The retaining walls had been reduced to a maximum of 32 feet in height, and the land needed from Shepherd Parkway had been reduced to 9.2 acres, and eight acres of that needed to be transferred from the National Park Service to GSA. I noted that that transfer has already taken place. The roadway is approximately one mile long and includes an access road, retaining walls, several overpass bridges, and a shared-use path along the eastern edge of the roadway. I'll point these out in a little bit more detail in upcoming slides. I'd also like to point out that some of the new roadway will be on the western side of I-295 because access to the St. Elizabeth's West Campus is needed for the southbound I-295 traffic as well. Here is a zoomed-in image of the central portion of the roadway, which includes the intersection with Malcolm X Avenue. Malcolm X Avenue is here, and then this is a southbound ramp that crosses over I-295 and then continues up to the north towards St. Elizabeth's West Campus. Excuse me. The areas that are shown here in black, black hatched, those areas are actually going to be, that's the existing Malcolm X Exchange and Interchange, and that will actually be demolished and replaced by this proposal. So because of the topographic changes, retaining walls are necessary to provide a level area for the roadway. This section down below shows the Shepherd Parkway property and then down to the access road here. As I noted earlier, retaining wall heights range up to a maximum of 32 feet. GSA notes that 80% of the retaining walls are less than 15 feet in height. The taller retaining walls are shown in yellow, orange, and red on this slide, and primarily they are here around Malcolm X, as well as on the western side of the roadway here with the overpass. And I just noted that some of these taller road walls will be facing Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, and Joint Base Anacostia Bowling is identified here. There is a historic district that's outlined here as well, and it's along Westover Road, and I'll be talking about Westover Road in an upcoming slide as well. GSA has met with the Navy to address concerns that the Navy has raised about the roadway, and I'll be discussing this in the staff analysis section. The access road will include, this image is a detailed, is a section of, a typical section for the roadway itself. It'll include two travel lanes north towards the St. Elizabeth's Campus, one coming away from the campus. It'll also have a 10-foot shared-use path along the length of it, which is, again, approximately a mile long, and it'll have a bio-retention area that will be between the roadway and the shared-use path. The walls themselves will have ivy or a vine growing on them, and we have a railing that's between the path and the bio-retention area, and that's being added for safety. So getting to the landscaping, this is proposed in the plan, and this is just an early concept. There are some more detailed drawings I'll show in upcoming slides. There are a couple of types of landscaping. There are landscaping that's along the roadway itself, and then there's a landscaping that's associated with the interchange. There are a few zones that are being planned for the roadway, the roadway, the access road planting. There are edge planting, transitional planting, and woodland planting. Edge planting is an area that is primarily just adjacent or near the intersection of the access road, which is here, and Malcolm X. And so this area here and here is where that edge planting would occur. And it consists of grasses, perennials, and street trees. There's a transitional planting area, which is adjacent to that edge planting, and it's a lighter green area. I'm not sure if you can read it really well, but it's basically this area from here to here, and it consists of perennials and street trees. And then finally, the woodland planting along this access road consists of perennials, shrubs, and street trees, plus some understory trees and vine planting that will cover the retaining walls. And that is next to the transitional planting, and it consists, and that's generally the length of the, of the rest of the length of the roadway. The interchange planting is shown here. It includes woodland transition zone, bio-retention areas, as well as meadow areas, and all of these are identified and shown on the plan that's before you. So GSA also provided a stormwater management report for the project that describes the stormwater measures it will employ to meet both the Energy Independence and Security Act, or ISO, and the 2013 District Department of the Environment Stormwater Regulations. Per these regulations, this project is required to retain approximately 50,000 cubic feet of stormwater, and it is providing approximately 64,000 cubic feet of onsite retention through the use of bioswales, infiltration trenches, and enhanced bioplanter. And this, all this means is that GSA is exceeding the, these required stormwater regulations. So for the proposed lighting, GSA is proposing these lights here, which are several lights, some on the access road, some along the ramp. These are 30 feet in height, and then along I-295, there's the 40-foot in height light station. The average spacing is, ranges between 120 and 160 feet on the center, and these lights will be dark sky compliant. This is just a view looking east, excuse me, looking west along Malcolm X Avenue. So in the distance here, you can see Joint Base Anacostia Bowling. This is the Arnold Gate, which is the main entrance for the installation. In the existing view, you see the overhead bridge, which is the I-295 overpass, as well as the existing roadway. The proposed view is showing a new overpass for the access road, as well as entrances and exits for the roadway onto I-295. So staff reviewed the submittal and find that the proposed roadway is consistent with the overall master plan vision of a separate access road for St. Elizabeth's West Campus. This roadway has undergone a process over a few years to minimize the impacts associated with using the parkland for roadway purposes. GSA explored various roadway design alternatives to determine if there were other ways to avoid using Shepherd Parkway and minimizing the impacts, as it determined that it couldn't avoid using it. The plan before you represents the results of these efforts to minimize these impacts. Staff did have a few concerns that we would like greater clarity on before this access road is submitted for final review, and these items are listed here. First, there is the environmental impact statement, record of decision requirement for hardwood habitat replacement. Next is a description of a temporary road closure for security reasons. And lastly, the Navy raised concerns about some impacts to the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, and I'll talk about that at the end of the presentation. So GSA provided information about tree plantings that are part of the project. It notes that it will plant between 390 and 420 trees, but did not describe how this will be connected to the hardwood habitat replacement effort that was described in the Record of Decision. The rod identified a no-net loss of hardwood habitat, but it's unclear to staff if the proposed tree plantings meet the no-net loss of habitat that was stipulated there. And staff is, would like to understand more fully how GSA is going to respond to this issue once the project, as a project is submitted for final review. So also included in the submission is a description of a temporary road closure for security reasons in the future, and this is, would be, it would be temporary, and it's, these are possible road closures. The road closure would likely affect this area, excuse me. Staff is unsure how the closure of the roadway will be transmitted to the public and what alternative means of access would be permitted, and what happens to the traffic if this portion of the roadway is closed. GSA didn't provide sufficient information to understand how this would fully work. Particularly, staff would also like to know if there were to be any physical barriers needed to close the roadway as well. In addition, staff is wondering if the shared-use trail will be closed along with the roadway. This trail does provide a link in an area of the city without many pedestrian bicycle connections, and we would like to have further information on this before the project is submitted for a final review. And lastly, this is the site in context with the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling and its historic district. Westover Avenue is a, is a road on the installation that contains some officer housing, and this housing dates back to the 1930s. The road parallels South Capitol Street, and this is just to show where this new access ramp is to be located, which is here. Excuse me. And the Navy has raised concerns about security, as well as some viewshed concern due to the height of this proposed access ramp. And again, the red is the height that's up to 32 feet in height. So you can see the section here, the new ramp will be visible, and this is, GSA provided this image for us. This is an eight-foot wall that is perimeter wall for Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, and this is the new ramp on the right-hand side of the slide that's being proposed as part of this project. It's, the main road that you see here is South Capitol Street. The Navy has identified the security concern because people on the new ramp would be able to see over the perimeter wall to the Westover Road, as well as the officers' quarters, which are located at this, which are located here. This is a view of, from Westover Road looking eastward, with the officers' housing is directly behind us. The view shows the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling wall, which is this perimeter wall here, as well as some trees and things outside of that as well. GSA provided a photo simulation, which is the image on the right, that shows the new road and ramp, as you can see here, this piece. GSA has, I noted, has met with the Navy to discuss these concerns, and they're still in conversations with them, but these have not been fully resolved. GSA, staff is requesting that this be resolved before the final design is submitted for our review. And with that, the executive director's recommendation is that the commission approve the preliminary site development plans for the I-295 Malcolm X Avenue Interchange Improvement Project, which includes a new access road paralleling I-295 that will improve access to the St. Elizabeth's West Campus, and request that GSA provide the following information as part of that, the final design. Describe how the proposal will meet the no-net loss of hardwood habitat mitigation requirement described in the 2012 Record of Decision. Describe under what circumstances and what portion of the new access roadway will be allowed to be closed temporarily for security reasons in the future, and provide information about how the roadway will be closed, including any temporary or permanent physical barriers, and sign into alerting motorists to the temporary roadway closure. And finally, address the Department of Navy comments regarding security and views towards Joint Base Anacostia Bowling resulting from a new southbound access ramp. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I have a quick question. Can you go back to the retaining wall slide? I want to make sure I understand the two types of retaining walls and the materials and design. I've read it, but I'm still not getting it.
I think it's 24. Just with the color contrast.
Is it the?
Keep that, that one, yeah.
So there's...
The mechanically stabilized earth wall, right? That's what this is.
Yeah, they, there are actually two. One is because this road, this, the earth is coming down this way, and so you have to have a retaining wall on this side, and on this side, the ground is a little bit lower, and so this retaining wall will have to kind of hold up the other side of the roadway. So I hope I'm explaining that correctly. So they require these kind of two retaining walls to give this flat...
One is holding the slope, and the other is holding the roadbed.
Right, got it. And so the material, that's ivy over what?
Well, they're looking at a, kind of a, I don't say faux, but it's kind of a...
Pressed. Pressed.
Pressed, thank you. That's good.
Faux, fake, any of those things, yes.
Pressed.
Tastefully faux.
They choose the concrete, and they, they'll press the design into it. And then the ivy will be on top of that, on that side.
Jim?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dixon.
Yeah, on slide 24. I just wondered, the contrast between the wall that's on the base and the other one is noticeable. I just wondered, maybe, in a way that the wall could be, would it matter if there was a difference to match the color, so you wouldn't see the big contrast when you look at it from that perspective?
Well, I think this slide is particularly...
You turned your mic off.
Oh. This slide is a little deceiving. Can you, because of the distances involved, we're talking about, what are we talking, I mean, that's the, this is the officers' quarters all the way on the left, and the slide that we did the photo sim on, the brick wall, can you point to it, Carlton?
This, this wall?
No, the brick wall that is, is the eight-foot wall that's right there, right? So if you do some quick math, the distance, you know, you're talking about five lanes of traffic. I don't know how many feet it is, but it's a lot. I guess that's a design...
It's over 200 feet. It looks over 200 feet from this wall to this wall.
Right.
Because this is 270, and this is about 60 here or so.
So the contrast, I think, is purposeful. The other thing, too, is it, I think we are, I could be wrong, but I think we are constricted. There's a, there are not a whole lot of design choices that you get to make here. I think the contrast with the brick is probably actually a good design choice because it's also emphasized by the distance, which, could you go back to this other one?
24.
24, yeah.
I mean, in that wall, there seems to be some brown color, I think it's a minor thing. It's not... thing, stones or whatever they are, it almost looks like the brick, but it's more white, it comes out to be more contrast. Just, just a question.
So you would like us to look at more contrast or less?
Yeah, less contrast, I mean, so it, so it doesn't become so apparent, maybe. I don't know.
Okay.
But I want to ask also about the trail.
Before we go there, can we, while we're on this, can I ask you a question? So are we actually seeing the retaining wall that's on the other side of 295, or are we seeing the retaining wall that supports?
The roadbed.
The, the ramp...
It's this.
Onto 295.
Yeah, give me, give me a second, I'll get, actually, here it is.
Yeah.
What you're seeing is this.
Right, got it. And that's 271 feet.
That's 270 feet. So then you have to go over, you know, the, the I-295 here to actually get to where you're talking, where the brick wall is.
No, the brick wall is, is closer in, that you're seeing in the photo simulation, and you're not seeing the retaining wall that holds the slope in that slide at all, because it's even further away.
That's, I understood, I was just, I knew there were two sets of retaining walls that might be visible or might be in that line. I don't know which one it was.
The other question is, you mentioned there is a trail that I guess is between the high, the new road and the trees, there's a trail.
The trail is here.
I guess that's for pedestrian and for bikes, maybe?
Yes.
For bikes.
Yes.
Is that road going to be accessible to the public, or is it going to be, it will be?
That's, that's been my understanding, that this is, this is being done because, if you recall, there's the west access road on St. Elizabeth's Campus that can, that connects to First Sterling. There isn't, there is also a trail that's there. So the idea is that this trail will connect literally from South Capitol Street all the way up to First Sterling.
Right.
So, so that, and that was the question that, that staff was having about if there is these temporary closures, then is that portion going to be closed at some point if there is, if there's some issue with national security or whatever?
So that means that is something that not only the facility can use, but also the community can use that trail too, as a bike trail or walking trail?
Yes.
I follow up on that. What's the dimension, proposed dimension of the...
It's a 10-foot wide trail. And they're calling it a shared use path, but...
Right.
Hopefully marked so you can walk in and biking, so people don't run over each other, but I'm sure it will be.
And I'll note that the, that the trail width is, is really, GSA was trying to balance the idea of not having to take up too much space in, in, in width of all of this. So, you know, they were trying to find a way to have the bower tension, the 10-foot trail and the roadway itself, and try to do that in as small areas as possible. And so the, some of this is kind of, is decided because of the, of not trying to take up as much space.
Yeah, I would argue that's an amenity for the community, and I think that's good.
And that was actually part of the rod? Or, there was something that, this was, I, I, there was a, there was a reason for this, this trail to be added to this, and, and I can't recall if it's the rod or, or through the MOA, but there was a definite need to, to have this as...
I think some people may be watching this and may not know what rods and MOAs are.
The Record of Decision, which is basically...
It's in the MOA, though.
It's the MOA? Okay. The memorandum of agreement for, for, for this particular project, that, this, this trail would, was discussed as mitigation in that, as, because you are taking a part of this, this, this Shepherd Parkway.
Very, very.
And so the idea was, well, why not have something that, that anybody can use, the public can use, and so the connection to St., to South Capitol Street is, is definitely needed.
I think, I want to, on behalf of the community, thank you for this, and as the Chair said, I have no shame, I would have no shame to ask for more, but maybe it will be, I don't know. Thank you.
Mr. May?
So I'm a little bit confused about the portion of the access road that is imagined to be transferred to DDOT, because what's in the report is, seems to be conflicting in a couple of places. So if you could just show us on a map where, what portion would be transferred to DDOT and what, what would remain under GSA's jurisdiction?
I find it long enough. It's my understanding that basically the part that's north, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Commissioner Wright, if this is...
That's okay.
If the area that's, that's north of, of Malcolm X Avenue, and the area south of that is DOT, so DDOT, excuse me.
So GSA retains everything north of Malcolm X?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not exactly clear on the, on this ramp. So the ramp that connects the south...
We need to get clarity of...
The southbound 295 with, with the, this area that's, that's here.
I'm clearly out of my depth in road design, so I'm going to call upon Tom Ennin from GSA, who is the project manager. Tom, can you answer these questions because they are, I just, let me...
With regard to ownership and jurisdiction, is GSA's intention to maximize DOT's ownership of the area, we would retain the area that is existing now, which is the access road of the campus that you guys saw, folks saw a while ago, which is, which is completed and serves, you know, Coast Guard in the lower part of the campus. We would keep that, and mainly because that's just the way it will work with the district in terms of who plows the snow. But with regard to what's proposed in front of you today, we would maximize DDOT's ownership of, of the right of way, and it might be the entire area up to the end.
And, and I can add that we are currently, GSA leadership is in discussions with DDOT about construction, who's doing what. We're just not there yet in terms of the best way to approach implementation.
Okay. So toward this end, one of the things that I, I have a question about is the finishes and fixtures. You know, we, what we're seeing here is form liner, pressed concrete, possibly dyed, compared with stone walls that exist on the, along the retaining walls on the west campus access road. Is that right? So how do we reconcile that difference? Why is it different here? Why aren't we getting stone for the rest of the retaining walls? And why aren't we getting the same light fixtures? So I think there's a difference there, that we're trying to go to the, the DDOT standard cobras, which are not as attractive as the fixtures that were used on the west campus access road.
Yeah, it's, and I'll let GSA answer it, but my understanding is that the, the light fixtures that were, that are on here are, that because DDOT is going to be the one, they're going to be the ones that actually would likely maintain the road, they have a certain standard that they would require, and, and that's, that was the, that was my understanding for, for this period. I could be wrong on, on that.
Okay. So has that been discussed in the consulting parties' meetings? The light fixtures that are being used and how they reconcile? I mean, I understand the DDOT ownership issue.
Yeah, I thought they were, yes.
Extensively. I mean, that's why, that's what I meant when I said, we, there were, there, there's a startling number in terms of, there's very few design choices we're, we're able to make. This is why I kind of feel a little bit out of my realm here. It's, much of it is very, is standardized, if not by DDOT, by FHWA, and, and yes, we have some choices to make.
All right. Well, you know, I think maybe between now and final, another look should be taken at that. I know that there are some choices in lighting that we see in other district roads that are faux historic, downlighting, 100% downlight compliant lights. I don't know if they're more appropriate here, whether they're consistent either, but I know that there are some choices, and I think it's, we have to be careful about that. But what about the stone question?
This, well, go ahead, Tom, and then I'll chime in on what I think it is.
We presented this to the consulting parties in the CFA.
Yeah.
The issues are these. The placed stone, which is gray and, very gray in color, and, and speaks to the Coast Guard and to this whole ice house up in the center of the campus, which is where the, the stone color comes from. That placed stone is campus oriented, so it's on the upland side of the access road, on the campus side of the access road. And then the rest of all of this stone appearance is meant to be consistent with the highway, a lot of which is already established.
Okay, except that most of the highways in the districts historically have been built with stone on their retaining walls, and it's only in the last few years that they've been going for less expensive alternatives in form liner.
Right.
And I'm not sure that we should be supporting that particular move. I think it's a, I mean, it's very, very noticeable. The Elephant Street Bridge is the most drastic example of that, and it looks awful. And I think that we should not be supporting a reduction in the quality of materials. I, you know, I'm sure that there can be stone that looks appropriate for that setting. I don't think that, and I don't think that it has to look consistent with an interstate highway, which, you know, up to now, its primary character-defining features were the forest that surrounded it. So I don't think that this is the right move, and I think that it needs to be examined before we get to final.
We, we will do that, because as you know, I mean, this has been discussed greatly with the consulting parties. Every, every design choice we had to make has been reviewed by them. I guess we should note that CFA did suggest a proliferation of vines, so...
I understand, and that may, that may be a perfectly appropriate treatment, and it calls for something other than stone, but that doesn't mean that, that, I mean, I don't, if they're talking about stone everywhere where we see, I mean, vines everywhere where we see the retaining wall, that's one thing, but if we're talking about some areas where we're going to see significant amounts of stone or concrete, I'd rather see stone, and I think it's a disservice to the, I mean, it diminishes the quality of, of, of that environment, particularly the things like the multi-use trail, which are going to get significant neighborhood use.
Right.
I think it just should be...
Surprisingly enough, I'm not arguing with you. We will look at it. We have, we have to bring it back for final design, and we will take it up with the consulting party.
I appreciate that.
You're not seeking an amendment, you're simply...
No, I'm just trying to make an aspirational statement about the...
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Dix asks.
Is there a motion on the EDR?
It's been moved.
It's been moved, and does Mr. May want to second it? Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that the EDR before you be approved. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you. I didn't think you would second.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Agenda item number 5B is comments on the site and building plans for parcel O at the Yards, which is at the Southeast Federal Center. And Mr. Hinkle?
And thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and good afternoon. So as, as you mentioned, this is a review of the 35% design drawings submitted by the General Services Administration of a private development proposal at parcel O at the Southeast Federal Center. And the Southeast Federal Center was formerly a part of the Washington Navy Yard in southeast DC and is now branded as the Yards. And the Yards is under development by Forest City, Washington through an agreement with GSA, and its development parameters are based on an NCPC-approved master plan. And per a 2005 memorandum of understanding between NCPC and GSA, NCPC's current role is to advise GSA on these 35% design drawings for building proposals at the Yards. And the focus of this review is, is, and advice is based on the project's conformance to some urban design guidelines and performance design standards that are outlined within the MOU. So there is no approval or disapproval of the project today. The Commission, as you, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, is only providing GSA with comments on the proposed development. And NCPC's role for providing GSA with comments on private development proposals at the Yards actually grew from our longstanding involvement and interest in seeing this former federal property developed into a vital part of the city. In particular, NCPC's legacy plan highlights the importance of a new urban development at the site to help link the urban core in the Anacostia River, as well as to provide new economic activity in the district. And development at the Yards has been moving forward for a number of years, with important events occurring in both 2000 and 2004, which is when the Southeast Federal Center Public Private Development Act actually authorized GSA to enter into agreements with a private entity, and when the master plan and associated zoning amendments were approved to allow development to proceed up the site. And this is a conceptual image of, from the developer showing build-out of the Yards with development at parcel O shown one block off of the waterfront. And today, the Yards is well under development with its waterfront park complete and a number of structures newly built and rehabilitated. And NCPC is generally pleased with how development has moved forward at the site, and this Commission has already seen a number of these 35% design submissions from GSA, and typically has had no issues with what is being proposed. And so what I'll do is, for the remainder of the presentation, is I'll walk you through the project and then discuss how the project, actually with the exception of height-related penthouse issues, generally meets the design guidelines and design standards that are outlined within the MOU, and then discuss how the project does not conform to the penthouse setback requirements of the Hyde Act, as well as some of the existing zoning requirements for penthouses. And just in summary, and I'll speak to these more in the upcoming slides, staff's first main concern with the proposed parcel O development as it's currently designed is that one of the penthouse structures does not meet the setback requirements of the Hyde Act. And our second issue is that the parcel O development is designed to take advantage of the 2014 Hyde Amendment, Hyde Act Amendment, which effectively allows for human occupancy of penthouses of up to 20 feet. And of note, this is actually the first project that this Commission has reviewed, either federal or private, that is designed to take advantage of this amendment. The problem here is that this is a private development, and while the Hyde Act Amendment is in place, current zoning regulations have yet to be changed to take advantage of this amendment. And while the zoning commission is currently discussing modifications to the zoning regulations that might allow human occupancy in penthouses, staff is not in a position to know what those modifications are, and thus we feel the project should be reviewed currently under current zoning regulations. So let me just quickly describe the proposal for part, parcel O for you. The, the site is located on the east side of the Yards. For those unfamiliar with the southeast Washington area, the Yards is generally the, the area between the Washington Nationals Baseball Stadium to the west and the Washington Navy Yard to the east, and M Street forms the northern border of the Yards and the Anacostia River to the south. The proposed development is situated in an area surrounded by both restored historic Navy Yard buildings as well as new development, and consistent with the Yards' master plan, development at parcel O is planned for a number, number of residential units, as well as ground floor retail that's designed to both support the community as well as enhance the pedestrian connection between the city and the waterfront. This is a slide showing the existing condition of the Yards' development near parcel O, and as I mentioned, there's a mix of restored historic Navy Yard buildings and new development in the surrounding blocks, but there's also a number of parcels that are still undeveloped at the Yards. And as, as you'll see in the next slides, the parcel O development is designed with an industrial vocabulary of both materials and elements to maintain the compatibility with the surrounding context. Parcel itself is surrounded by Tinji Street to the north, Water Street on the south, and Fourth and Fifth Street on the west and east sides. And while considered one building for development purposes due to some internal connections, the site is divided into two development parcels, parcel O1 and parcel O2, with each having separate architects and development teams. And so with this, the separate buildings on each parcel will have their own separate architectural expression. It's illustrated in this view, which is from Fourth and Tinji Street, looking southeast. And the facades for parcel O1, which are in the foreground, are primarily steel and glass, and then there's a three-story brick base that on the north and east side sits approximately six feet in front of the primary facade. And this is a bird's eye view of the proposal looking northwest from Fifth and Water Streets. And for parcel O2, to the left side of the slide, is, it's structured as two towers, which is separated by a courtyard as well as connected by a one-story connection on the northern end of the site. And the facades of the towers are patterned with concrete, metal, and glass elements, and then there's some brick use, used on the first two... And then there's some brick use, used on the first two levels. And in this view, you also get a good feel for the proposed penthouse structure in parcel O1, which is designed to take advantage of the amendment to the Hyde Act by building to 20 feet and including residential units with terraces on the top of the roof. And then this roof that it sits on is at 110 feet, which is the maximum height allowed under the Hyde Act for parcel O. And this is the site plan for parcel O1, and it continues the streetscape established for the Yards, but it also takes advantage of a change in topography at the site to include a retail terrace that's proposed for potential outdoor dining. And then this is the site plan for parcel O2, which also continues the established streetscape pattern for the Yards. But you also see a large courtyard that is areas reserved both for the residents, as well as some areas open to the public. And then this is the roof plan for the entire parcel O. And the configuration of the total structure actually creates a central court that is open to both Fifth Street to the east and Water Street to the south. And this configuration allows for double-loaded corridors of the buildings to access the residential units, but it also impacts the penthouse setbacks, as I'll discuss later. So moving on to staff's analysis, and beginning with a discussion on the project's conformance with the urban design guidelines. These guidelines, as I mentioned, are contained in the MOU between GSA and NCPC, and are the primary elements for which NCPC is to base its comments. And with that said, and with the exception of the penthouse setback and height issues that I'll discuss shortly, where height and open views are one consideration of, of the design guidelines. The proposed parcel O development is generally in conformance with these guidelines. So the project is oriented towards the Anacostia River. It doesn't obstruct federal monumental buildings. It maintains the established street grid and, and planned streetscape, and it is a high-density residential project with approximately, approximately 332 residential units planned. Further, the, the project's site design includes fully landscaped sidewalk areas, retail terrace, and a courtyard. It only houses underground parking, and there are multiple types and sizes of units being proposed, including condominiums and apartments. And in addition, the project has a significant amount of ground floor retail. So basically, because of all those reasons, and with the exception of the penthouse issues, the project is generally in conformance with the design guidelines. Now getting on to the performance design standards. These deal with sustainable design, pedestrian access, architectural design, as well as urban planning. And the project is designed to achieve LEED Silver Certification. It provides pedestrian-friendly amenities at the street level. It is designed with an appropriate industrial vocabulary that is actually compatible with the Navy Yard context. And since it conforms with the approved master plan, it is supportive of the, its urban context. So because of those reasons, staff finds that the project is generally in conformance with the performance design standards provided in the MOU. Then now to discuss the project's conformance with the Hyde Act. In staff's analysis for parcel 1, both the proposed penthouse structure and the guardrails are not adequately set back from the exterior walls of the structure. And I'll actually discuss these individually. The Hyde Act very simply requires that penthouses be set back from exterior walls, distance is equal to the respective heights above the adjacent roof. So in relevance to this parcel O proposal, this means that a one-to-one penthouse setback should be made from the edge of any exterior wall, which includes any wall facing a street, any wall facing a court that is open to a public street, and any wall that provides a setback from the lot line that it faces. And because the proposed Hyde Act at the rooftop, the proposed building height, excuse me, at the rooftop is at the maximum height allowed under the Hyde Act, the setback requirements of the Hyde Act are the requirements that staff is focused on in this review. However, as this is a private development, I do want to point out that the district's zoning regulations echo the Hyde Act stipulation on setbacks. And this is with Section 400.7B, which simply states that penthouses shall be set back from all exterior walls, a distance at least equal to its height above the roof upon which it is located. So what does this mean for the parcel O1? So the applicant has measured the penthouse setback from a roof at the outermost edge of the building frontage, and most of which is actually at the third floor, which is indicated by the green line in this graphic. Whereas according to the Hyde Act, the penthouse setback measuring point should be from the edge of the roof on which the penthouse sits, and this is indicated by the red line in this graphic. So as such, staff believes the north and east walls of the proposed 20-foot-high penthouse are inadequately set back from the building's edge. This is just another graphic. You might be able to see this clearer with this elevation. The applicant is, again, is measuring the penthouse setback from the edge of the third-story roof, when the measurement, in fact, should be taken from the edge of the roof on which this penthouse sits, which is actually six feet back from the lower, outer wall that the applicant is taking the measurement from. And then again, just another graphic to illustrate the same point. The blue line represents where the applicant has measured the penthouse setback, which, again, is the edge of the roof at the third floor. The red line represents the roof edge from which the penthouse setback should actually be measured. So with the exception of the undulating elements on the north facade that you see there, this, again, is six feet back from the lower brick-fronted base element. Then, in addition, the penthouse structure should also be set back from the walls that form the open court that is open to the street. And as I mentioned earlier, the building forms a court that is open to both Fifth Street and Water Streets. And, you know, as you can see, however, the, the, above the roof height allowed by the Hyde Act, the penthouse structure in parcel O1 has no setback from this open court. And consistent with the Hyde Act requirement, the area that I highlighted in yellow, both an east-facing portion of the penthouse and a south-facing portion of the penthouse, should be set back from the exterior walls that form this open court. And now to discuss the setback of handrails and guardrails. Again, the guardrail that's proposed for parcel O1 is not set back from the edge of the structure, and this has been a consistent requirement by this commission. The Hyde Act does accept certain structures from the required setbacks, such as spires, towers, and domes, but it makes no mention of handrails or guardrails. And as such, staff believes a proposed glass guardrail should be set back from the edge of the roof at a distance that is equal to its height. Further, in this case, the handrails are proposed to be transparent glass, but, you know, we have concern that what if they were not transparent? What if they were opaque and they remained at the edge of the roof? The Hyde Act specifically does not allow parapets that exceed the allowable building height under the Hyde Act. And while there's no definition in the Hyde Act for a parapet, or even in the zoning regulations currently, staff followed the zoning regulations requirement to consult the Webster's Dictionary for a definition. And the dictionary defines a parapet as a low wall or railing to protect the edge of a platform, roof, or bridge. So with that definition, the proposed glass railing should be considered a parapet, which is not allowed above the height, the roof height that is allowed under the Hyde And now I just want to touch briefly on issues of existing zoning and on human occupancy and the penthouse height. As I previously mentioned, the parcel O development is designed to take advantage of the 2014 Hyde Amendment Act, which allows for human occupancy for penthouses up to 20 feet in height. But for private development in the district, the Hyde Act and zoning regulations work together in regulating the height of buildings, as well as their use, placement, and massing of penthouses. But currently, the zoning code does not allow human occupancy, with one exception for accessory space in, in apartment buildings. And the code only allows a maximum penthouse size, height of 18 feet and 6 inches. So private development in the district currently cannot take advantage of the change in the Hyde Act until and if the zoning code is amended. And the, as I mentioned, the zoning commission has taken this up and is currently considering amendments to the penthouse regulations, and in fact is scheduled to have a discussion next week, I believe. But there is no current timetable for when those amendments might take place, and staff does not know what those amendments might be. So such as a private development, the proposed residential space within, as well as the proposed 20-foot height of, the penthouses on parcel O1 are inconsistent with current zoning. And the point on the 20-foot height is also consistent with a recent zoning administrator determination, which was actually provided by the applicant and attached to the back of the EDR, which states that, as well, that the proposed height of the penthouse is not consistent with, with existing zoning. So as such, the project should be redesigned to current zoning standards, or the developer can wait to see what zoning amendments to the penthouse regulations the zoning commission may take, and then ensure that the parcel O1 penthouse structure conforms to those new regulations. But again, we're not sure what those regulations may be. So this is a 2013 image of the waterfront park at the Yards, looking north towards some of the new development. And I'll end this presentation by stating that in concept, staff is supportive of the proposed development at parcel O, and continues to be supportive of how the Yards is developing. But because there is currently no zoning in place to implement the Hyde Act amendment, then the Hyde Act's allowance of habitable space in the penthouse level, at the penthouse level, cannot yet be applied to any private development. And as I mentioned, however, the zoning commission has taken this up and is currently considering amendments to these penthouse regulations. So if the zoning commission does propose to modify the zoning regulations for penthouse structures, then this commission will have a role in reviewing those proposed amendments for conformity with federal interests before they are implemented. And then it is only after that process that private development will potentially be able to take advantage of the Hyde Act amendment. So while that could be in the near future, I believe no specific time, timeframe for this has yet been established. And with that stated, for this project, the direct, executive director recommends the following actions. Recommends that the commission finds that the parcel O 35% exterior design submission conforms to the urban design guidelines identified in the 2005 MOU between NCPC and GSA, and that the commission finds that the submission conforms to the performance design standards identified in that MOU. Further, that the commission finds that the penthouse structure setbacks and guardrails proposed for parcel O1 are not consistent with the Height of Buildings Act, and that the proposed penthouses' north and east exterior walls are not set back from the exterior wall at a distance equal to their respective height above the allowable height under the Hyde Act, and the proposed penthouse is not set back from the open court on the south side of the parcel. And further, that the proposed guardrails are not set back from the exterior wall, a distance equal to its respective height above the allowable height under the Hyde Act, and their design and placement at the edge of the roof act as a parapet that are not, that also is not allowed to exceed the allowable height under the Hyde Act. And finally, notes that for private development within the district, the Hyde Act and the district zoning regulations work together in regulating the height of buildings and the use, placement, and massing of penthouses. And the zoning administrator determines a project's compliance with the zoning regulations. However, all buildings and structures within the district are to comply with the Height of Buildings Act. And also notes that the proposed 20-foot height of penthouses on parcel O1 exceeds the current zoning regulation limit of 18 feet 6 inches, and that the proposed habitable, habitable space within the penthouses is not allowed under current zoning regulations, and that the zoning commission is currently considering amendments to the text of the zoning regulations related to the form and use of penthouses and other rooftop elements. However, such amendments have not yet been finalized and implemented. And therefore, the proposed form and use of the parcel O1 penthouse should conform to existing zoning. And if amendments to the zoning regulations occur, then the parcel O1 penthouse could conform to those amendments. However, such amendments may also necessitate, necessitate changes to the design of the penthouse and other rooftop elements. And that completes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. Could you go back to slide 20, I think it might have been 23?
Sure.
You showed some code language on, I think it was exterior walls. 23 or thereabouts.
Is that it?
Yes. Little bullet, any wall facing a court that is open to a public street, open to, in this context, does that mean open to is visually seen by, or open to by way of access?
Visually. Visually is, is what we typically go by.
That's my only question.
We often see structures that have, you know, some floor or two that fills up and then a courtyard above it.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. May?
So, this project is somewhat exasperating. The, the first question I have is why is this before us now? And I guess this is a question for GSA, because, you know, the zoning commission has been discussing penthouses for some time pursuant to the action taken by this commission, and it's been a, an interesting and contentious process. There's a lot of, a significant amount of comment from the public opposed to making substantial changes even to penthouse regulations, and we're kind of jumping the gun, and only by a few days, because we're, theoretically, some indication from the zoning commission may come on Monday. I don't think everything is going to be resolved on Monday, and, and of course, it takes two votes, between which the NCPC weighs in. But, I mean, this is just like way ahead of it, and I, I don't understand why it's so urgent. Why can't this just have waited for a couple of months so that the zoning commission could take care of business, and there would be clarity at least on that point? So maybe perhaps...
I'd be happy to answer that for you. We have already pulled the submission once in an effort to wait for, for these issues to be resolved by the zoning commission, number one. Number two, Forest City has been an excellent development partner and, with us, and we are seeking to return the favor by not holding them up to, we have no grounds at GSA to hold them up on our, our part of it, which is to bring what we believe is an excellent design, and they have been very responsive to us and the, the shippo in complying with our design review and with the design guidelines for the Yards. Because, so you ask why now? Well, I mean, I have, I have asked on several occasions when we could expect some final iteration and the zoning to be set down and interpret the, the amendment of the Hyde Act. The Hyde Act, as we know, has been amended and signed by the president. We do not have an incentive on our end to wait. We don't have a reason to wait. They are, again, they've been...
Other than deference to another body that's ruling on this.
But, but, hold on. Our development agreement with them says that we will bring the design forth for comment at 35%. They're well beyond 35%. In fact, CFA, when we took the design for review by them, commented as much. We have, we have, and that's a measure of, of how long they've already waited, and, and I will admit that I held them up in the Office of Planning and Design Quality for several months, hoping that we would not have to be the first test case of the new, of the interpretation, if you will, of the Hyde Act amendment. But here we are. And, and I would suggest that we, well, GSA, obviously, we understand the final word on the subject is at the zoning commission, and the zoning commission will have a look at the design at that time.
There will be, there's no review of this...
But you will have a look, the zoning commission will have a look at the issues that are being contended here today. So, and, and we could get into a lengthy debate here about the Hyde Act and the, and the, the implications for the design, but, but as a private development, this commission, in the end, does not have... for the design, but as a private development, this commission, in the end, does not have regulatory authority over this development. The zoning commission does. So, and we obviously would not advocate for a design that violates either DC zoning or the Hyde Act in the end, but those determinations cannot be made at this time. And so it's the first, it's the guinea pig that's caught, and as a good development partner, GSA is not in the position to say, well, just wait indefinitely until the zoning is set down. I mean, we need to fill our part of the bargain with Forest City and bring the design forward because it's, from our perspective, it's ready to go. Clearly, it's got to go through the gauntlet, but that's not GSA's role to enforce that, provided that it meets our standards for design quality, which it does at this time.
Okay, so let me talk to that a little bit. The, I mean, you said yourself that you wouldn't advocate for something that violates the zoning regulations, yet here you are doing exactly that. This does violate the zoning regulation, and it very clearly does so. The zoning commission, when it took up the issue of penthouse regulations, had an open mind about how they would view projects, that we might consider projects that could go one way or the other depending on the interpretation of the regulations. That became incredibly problematic. And so everything that's come before the zoning commission since the Hyde Act modification was made was consistent with it. Now, often, it was noted that if the zoning regulations change, they might come back for a modification, and that seemed perfectly fine, and I think that would have been an appropriate strategy here, and that's not one that you considered. I think that they could have been sent back to the drawing board to do something that was consistent with the current zoning regulations, and then when it changes, however it changes, it could come back for further review if it was deemed substantive enough by the NCPC under the terms of the MOU for further review. But that's what you did not do, and that's what I find very, very disappointing, and I hope it is not repeated here. I understand now that it's been submitted, we have 45 days to act or not, and if we don't, it's considered no comment. But I think it should be clear in the record here that this is not the way it should occur, and that you should be, as you said, presenting projects that are consistent with the zoning regulations. I am ready to move on to the Hyde Act issues that are actually here and voice my support for the staff's interpretation on all of these issues. I will note that there's a letter submitted into the record reflecting the zoning administrator's interpretation of certain Hyde Act, or certain issues of height and setback and so on, and I find some of those to be incorrect and frankly inconsistent with past zoning commission interpretations of the same issues. And that is one of the, these sorts of setback issues, which are areas routinely where people try to reinterpret things and find new avenues to get a little bit more here and there. I think that that, that's something that the zoning commission is very attentive to and is addressing in the zoning regulation rewrite process, which as of May 29th, I think the new zoning regulations were released, and it's out for a four-month comment period, and final action is scheduled for mid-October on that, which will change many of the things that are, that are not clear here, that, you know, the developer seems to be taking advantage of, where they interpret the Hyde Act a certain way, and the zoning administrator goes along and NCPC objects. The zoning commission is very attentive to that and wants to make those, that area of potential disagreement go away. We want to find something where it's very consistent and clear, so that there's clarity for developers and there's not disagreement between the zoning commission or the zoning administrator and NCPC. So I have issues with a number of those interpretations. I'm frankly surprised that even this developer would undertake something like this because on past planned unit developments that were reviewed by the zoning commission, some of these same issues were addressed, and they were addressed to the satisfaction of the zoning commission, and what we see here today would not pass muster with the zoning commission. I'm not looking for comment on that, I'm just, you know, this is our opportunity to comment, and so I'm laying it out there on the record for, so that everyone knows where at least this commissioner stands and where the zoning commission, or at least my views as regards the zoning commission's interpretation are. I would also note that, I mean, we didn't really focus on this, but the zoning commission does, or the zoning regulations do allow greater use of penthouses as a result of a change in the Hyde Act, and that goes to the accessory use space for apartment buildings. And that's an area where we've already seen a number of cases come through with the zoning commission. I'm sure the zoning administrator is interpreting them similarly, but basically, it says that when not in conflict with the Hyde Act, you can have up to 20% of the, a space equal to 20% of outdoor rooftop recreation space for interior recreation space, in essence, community rooms, things like that. And we've seen a substantial increase in those kinds of projects, and I think that is exactly one of the objectives that the NCPC had in recommending changes to the Hyde Act, which is getting greater rooftop activation, rooftop use. And so I think already the changes made, recommended by the National Temple Planning Commission have resulted in changes in the use of rooftops, and I think that's a very positive thing. The, and I just want to hit on one other point. As I said, I agree with the staff's interpretation of the setback issues with regard to open courts and when those walls are visible from the street, and the setback requirement for handrails. And I find this continually baffling, and I don't know why anybody would interpret it any different way. I mean, glass is not invisible. It is not invisible, and so what's at the face of the building and extends up another four feet or three and a half feet, it is very visible, and it should be set back. And again, this is an area where the zoning commission has been very clear in its interpretation on planned unit developments, handrails are either at the Hyde Act height, or they are set back by a height equal to the distance, and any platforms or anything else are also set back. So, that's my two cents. Or more.
Mr. Griffiths?
Chairman, a couple of comments. I have great concern in the last finding of the staff, and I have so for numerous reasons. First and foremost, as Commissioner said, the president did sign NPL 113103, which did amend the Hyde Act. I think that should be, in many respects, controlling for our thought process and our review and what we're looking at here. Second is, as Commissioner May has now said very well, the zoning commission hasn't taken action on this, and I think that our role, my personal view as a commissioner, is that we should then be silent on those issues that are addressed in this project. I have great concern that we are delaying a project that is on a schedule that may well be different than our schedule or the zoning commission's schedule, and for us to step in and delay it when we don't necessarily have to, I don't think we should. But the third piece that actually troubles me most about this, and zoning commission, as Mr. May has said, does review and interpret the regulations and apply them in PUD applications, and they write the zoning regulations in the District of Columbia, if I am correct. But they do not execute the zoning, and that is the zoning administrator. And the zoning administrator, as part of this package and part of this application, has an official letter. An official letter in the standing of the District of Columbia is his ruling, and it seems to me that we are stepping so far into looking at his reasoning that we're actually stepping into an adjudication of an appeal of a zoning administrator's action. And I am not familiar with whether we should or can constitute ourselves to do that, but I also don't think that we're in, essentially, at a level that we need to get into that minute detail. In terms of the guardrails, I think we could compare opinions back and forth, and there are case studies on each side. I would tend to rely to what the zoning administrator says in his own letter, and as he states, Section 411.17, I believe. But that being said, I don't feel comfortable going in and reassessing what the zoning administrator has done and saying it's incorrect.
All the questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I have a process question, as ever. We're seeking comments, so is there a motion that's necessary, or what do we do here?
I believe the commission has asked to act on the comments, so they will be transmitted back to GSA.
Okay.
So, just to clarify for everybody's benefit, these are comments to GSA, they're not necessarily comments to the zoning commission or to the district. They are providing our views to another sister federal agency, which has a role in the development of this project. They are, in fact, the landholders of this. So we did point out the federal Hyde Act as an issue, obviously, since we are both federal agencies. We are also just noting, this is not a, you know, this has no regulatory effect, but we're also noting the conflicts with the existing zoning, which I think is pretty clear, which pretty clearly states that this use is not permissible, and at some point, whenever the rules are adopted, we expect that the developer will conform to them in the process that...
As do we at GSA.
Right.
We understand.
Can I take one issue with that? And believe me, I'm a layman here, but the Hyde Act, the 1910 Hyde Act, is a federal law. It has just been amended by the president. So in some respects, one could argue that this may well comply with the Hyde Act. Now, the Hyde Act, as it is then put into the local zoning code, may not comport to what is being addressed here, but to make a blanket statement that this doesn't comply with the Hyde Act, I don't think is 100% correct.
The Hyde Act as amended and as yet to be interpreted.
Right.
I mean, that's why we brought it here.
As yet to be codified with local law, that's what it is.
I mean, can I make an observation here? I mean, the zoning commission is a creation of federal law as well, and so there is, and there is a federal role there, and the NCPC regularly comments on matters of zoning, and those are well-defined in NCPC's own regulations. I don't think there's any issue at all with NCPC commenting on whether something is consistent with the Hyde Act or consistent with even local zoning. I mean, it's just, here, it's just an observation that it's not consistent with current zoning, and I think it's an important observation, as we discussed here today. I mean, Commissioner Wright rightly stated that it would not come here to advocate for something that is inconsistent with zoning regulations, except in this case.
No, no, I didn't say that. What I, but what I think that it's not, that it is not necessarily, to ignore the fact that the zoning regulations are in the process of a pretty significant revision is, does not comport with common sense at this point.
So, in any case, I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to be commenting in this fashion on the Hyde Act and mentioning the zoning regulations, which are in process. And I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff report.
And I would second that.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, can I just make one other observation in response to Mr. Griffiths? I mean, this is a federal law, the president signed off on this, but it is part of the local DC code, it's just a very, very narrow part that we are not allowed to touch, and it can only be touched under the Home Rule Act by the federal government. So, I mean, it is part of the local zoning regulations, but it is also part of our local law, and it's not just a purely federal law that it's controlled.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the EDR for say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Opposed.
One no.
I'd like to abstain, Mr. Chairman.
One no, one objection. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Henkel, very much. Agenda item number 5C is comments on the concept design for the Francis Case Memorial Bridge architectural lighting. We have Mr. Ponte.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm here to present the Francis Case Memorial Bridge architectural lighting concept. This project is submitted by DDOT on behalf of the Southwest Business Improvement District. The project's site is located on the Francis Case Memorial Bridge, which crosses over the Washington Channel and the Main Avenue Southwest. The project's site is bound by the Southwest Eco-District to the north, the Southwest Redevelopment, known as the Wharf Project, to the east, East Potomac Park to the south, and the Title Basin to the west. Back in 2011, NCPC approved the first H-PUD of the Wharf Project, but this is a 26-acre mixed-use redevelopment of the waterfront. Although this project is separate from the Wharf Project, the applicant is proposing to illuminate the bridge, to create this visually experience for the nighttime visitor, and also support the activity that will come along on the waterfront. Built in 1961, the bridge is part of the interstate highway system. It spans approximately a quarter mile in length. This serves vehicles along I-395 entering into the nation's capital with views of the Washington Monument and the Jefferson Memorial. As the bridge crosses over the Washington Channel, it splits into three arms. You have the northern side of the bridge, which carries the southbound traffic, and is the closest to the Washington Marina Company. The other two arms carry the northbound traffic, and you'll see that the southern side of the bridge becomes the 12th Street off-ramp. This also includes a pedestrian bridge access from Manicure Park over to East Potomac Park, and this area is closest to the Main Avenue Fish Market. The proposed project would include two different accent lighting installations to the bridge, including pier downlights and linear lighting. Multiple LED light fixtures would be installed under the entire span of the bridge. The downlights would highlight the existing stone piers that exist both in water and on land. A blue linear segment of LED lighting would be installed to highlight the horizontal lines of the southern side of the bridge. You'll notice in the image, below, the northern side of the bridge does not include that similar blue lighting. Previously, this design was submitted to the Commission of Fine Arts, and they did advise that the applicant remove this from this northern portion. The concept design is consistent with the Monumental Core Framework Plan and policies in the federal Parks and Open Space Element to enhance the waterfront and gateways, and also connect public parks and open spaces. The proposed project would create this nighttime visual connection from East Potomac Park to the rest of the city, and also create this enhanced environment along the waterfront. In the next couple of slides, I'll be discussing a few areas of focus, including safety, illumination, and urban design. In order to install the proposed light fixtures, the applicant would need to relocate the existing navigational channel lighting for the safety of boats using the Washington Channel. NCPC staff advises that the applicant work with the U.S. Coast Guard to ensure that the project complies with the life and safety standards. As DDOT and the Southwest bid moves forward with this memorandum of agreement for this project, they should consider the installation, the long-term maintenance and operations for this lighting installation. The commission has periodically weighed in on the topic of illumination for projects, for federal projects, buildings, monuments and museums, signage, parks and open space, and also other streetscape elements. A key challenge is determining the appropriate illumination level for a project and understanding how it competes with the hierarchy of lighting civic structures in the nighttime sky. Lighting can be a powerful tool to enhance the public realm. It can be used to meet urban design goals and objectives. However, misdirected or excessive lighting can have the opposite effect. One of the most important contributors to Washington's image is the symbolic skyline. In the nation's capital, illumination should respect the hierarchy among memorials, monuments, and important civic buildings and spaces, with the U.S. Capitol, the Washington Monument, both Lincoln and Jefferson memorials being the most prominent features in the nighttime As stated in one of the existing policies in our federal elements, exterior lighting should contribute to the Capitol's nighttime image and suggest an appropriate hierarchy among the civils and features of the nation's capital. The proposed project is located on a Capitol gateway and in close proximity to many national significant resources. The amount of light illuminating the bridge should be adjusted to remain at a lower level in comparison to these prominent features in our nighttime sky. The applicant has indicated that there will be a mock-up of this accent lighting for the bridge to test the necessary level of illumination. In summary, it is the executive... In summary, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission comments favorably on the proposal to illuminate the bridge to create a nighttime visual experience for visitors and support new activity along the redeveloped waterfront, and provides the following comments. Consider the placement, intensity, and programming of lighting as to not detract from the Capitol gateway views of the Monumental Core or skyline views to important symbols and civic buildings, particularly within the setting in and around the Monumental Core. Request that the applicant work with NCPC and CFA staff during the mock-up trial to identify the appropriate lighting levels. Advices that the applicant work with the U.S. Coast Guard to ensure that the proposed project complies with bridge navigational lighting and safety requirements. And requests that the applicant identify maximum luminance level, programming, long-term maintenance, and operations at the preliminary design stage of this project, and address these issues in the memorandum of agreement between the applicant and the Southwest bid. This concludes my presentation. We do have DDOT and also the project team representatives available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Questions or comments on the presentation of the EDR? Pretty straightforward. Mr. May?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is a, will be a very interesting project. The design team and the advocates for this project have been meeting with the Park Service for a long time, I can't remember how long, but it's, it seems like it's been a couple of years in the making. And, you know, we appreciate how it's evolved, and I especially appreciate everyone sticking to it, because I know it's a very difficult process to get through all the approvals and everything else. So, I look forward to it being realized, and hopefully, it will be a genuine, genuinely beautiful addition to what is otherwise not the most exciting bridge, although I will note that it is completely clad in stone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I thought you might, yeah.
Other comments? Hearing none, is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR is presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's unanimous, thank you. And last, agenda item 5D is the final adoption of the preservation historic features element of the comprehensive plan, and Ms. Bush?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm here to present the updated historic features and preservation element of the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol for final approval. Part of this update includes proposal to retitle the element, the historic preservation element, in an effort to clarify the element's focus, and that's how I'll refer to it today. Before we talk about the element, I'll provide a brief background on the comprehensive plan and its status. The comp plan is comprised of two components, the federal and the district elements. The district elements, developed by the D.C. government, were last amended in 2011, and they address traditional city planning issues such as land use, housing, and economic development. The federal elements are prepared by NCPC. They were last amended in 2004, and they provide a policy framework for the federal government in managing its operations and activities in the National Capitol region. And since 2010, we've been bringing individual elements to the commission for your review as an overall effort to update the entire federal elements. The existing federal elements of the comprehensive plan last adopted in 2004 do include a historic preservation element. We released a draft update to the element for a 90-day public comment period in November of 2012, together with the draft urban design element, because there is overlap in some of the core themes there. Right at about that time, however, we were directed to undertake the Hyde master plan, so both elements were placed on hold until completion of the master plan. And over the past year, staff has further reviewed this element update in response to comments that we did receive during that 2012 public comment period, as well as working to ensure that the historic preservation element and the newly expanded urban design element have policies that appropriately complement one another. Some of the common themes summarized from the 2012 record of public comment include maintaining a sense of historic continuity of federal facilities as contemporary architecture styles are introduced over time, as well as emphasizing the importance of the 1901 McMillan Plan, along with the L'Enfant Plan, as a formative contributor to Washington's forming character. And over the next several slides, we'll focus on the main updates to the historic preservation element, which did consider public comment. Here's the outline for the element. As you can see, it's organized into five sections. The main intent of the element is to set forth guiding policies to protect historic resources of national and federal interest within the National Capitol region. Washington has a unique character that rests on the foundation of its historic planning, most notably the plan of the City of Washington, which is a primary focus in the element. Now, we'll look at the updates to the element, which are relatively minor, the first of which is the proposed new title to the historic preservation element. There's also a revised goal statement, which refocuses the element on the important features of the plan of the City of Washington, which includes both the L'Enfant and the McMillan Plan. Concerning policy, the proposed updates include establishing a policy which considers the preservation of regional historic properties. The element also includes an additional policy that emphasizes the importance of preserving a sense of historic continuity and evolution as contemporary architectural styles are introduced over time. More recently, while working concurrently on the draft urban design element, staff wanted to ensure that both elements complement one another, as both historic preservation and urban design policies will guide the future maintenance and enhancement of the city's framework. And because the urban design element and technical addendum include a breadth of detailed information on the context and character of Washington's important view sheds, as well as guiding policies for their maintenance and enhancement, staff transferred several policies related to view sheds from the updated historic preservation element to the draft urban design element. Those specific policies that were transferred are included in Appendix 3 of the EDR you received for today's meeting. Also, those transferred policies are included in the draft urban design element that's currently out for public comment. Lastly, the policies in the element account for the integration of sustainability objectives with historic preservation. And taking a look beyond at prospective work that might follow up this element, staff anticipates a focus on this particular subject area for future policy work, mainly taking a look at where planning, preservation, and sustainability goals overlap, and how to reconcile differences between them to maintain and enhance the unique character of historic federal facilities and landscapes. And lastly, it's the executive director's recommendation that the commission approve the final adoption of the updated policies in the newly titled historic preservation element, and hold the policies in abeyance until final adoption of the federal elements of the comprehensive plan. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Bush? Comments? Question before us is the adoption of the historic preservation element, but to be held until all federal elements are approved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Since no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. That concludes today's actions. Today was a fairly efficient meeting, next month will be also efficient, but longer. So, Mr. Costa or anyone, is there anything else to come before us? Thank you, we are adjourned.